Please remain standing, Cody.
Sure. Can we please all have a moment of silence for our wonderful police, our brave men and women in law enforcement and those who serve overseas for us?
Thank you very much. Everybody have a seat, please. Okay. Well, I feel like this chair is very short. I'm already short. Okay. Alrighty, thank you all for coming and I'll just announce that the meeting is being recorded via Zoom. The recording will be uploaded later to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. Under the chairman's report, the board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting. And this was to discuss real estate and legal matters. The office will be closed Monday, September 6th in recognition of Labor Day holiday. And because of Labor Day, the Labor Day holiday, there will be no yard waste pickup on Wednesday, September the 7th. There are no public hearings this evening, so we're going to move right to the emergency services report. And if you don't mind, Brenda, come on up. We're going to have Chief Burnout come on up. How are you tonight? Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to gloss over a little bit the statistical report and just give a synopsis. I'm going to say that there were 1,201 calls for service in all three townships. For July of 2022, that is a 21.4% increase over any of the previous three years, minimum. With regard to East Goshen, calls for service again are up. And we're seeing something not only in East Goshen that we're seeing in all three townships. We are back to our pre-pandemic levels for calls for service. We invite everybody to visit our Crime Watch website and also our social media sites. We have a lot of information about crimes, cases, and also just general information for the public. I'd like to highlight some of the material that was there for July and this month. Number one, the most important thing, I think, is I'm very excited that this evening we were notified that we were awarded a $50,000 grant for the purchase of two additional license plate readers to serve the residents of the three townships.
That's great.
Very excited about that. No, it's, there is a foundation that the original farmers of that are West Town residents. And they were having a conversation with one of our officers. And they started talking about license plate readers and this individual, a friend of theirs had been saved. She had dementia. She went missing. They were able to use the license plate reader to locate her and bring her home safely.
That's great.
So they wanted to get two license plate readers for the department. I'm very excited about that. Very, very pleased.
This is actually private donation that was made then?
Yeah, the, um, the RJM Foundation.
That's great.
Our thanks to them.
Yeah, that's what I said when, when they, uh, the son of the, I don't want to get into much personal detail for the family. The son is going to be coming up in September, October from where he lives in the Carolinas. And we're going to show him the license plate reader and also give him an opportunity to hear stories from people whose lives were positively impacted by it. So that they can, they can see what their money is going to be going towards.
That's great.
Uh, some of the other things that we're happy about is officially, we've been notified that we will be reaccredited. We went through the process and they notified us that we met their standards. Some of the other things that we've been involved in, we've done, been doing a lot of posts about safety, like driving with your dog on your lap. Things like, um, social media and juveniles, protecting them. And, uh, we've already started to get some feedback. We posted something yesterday afternoon about the inspection of electric vehicles. A lot of people did not know that you still have to have an inspection done on your vehicle, not the emission, but the safety. So we also participated in National Night Out. We, we've done things like advertising the new suicide and crisis hotline. So we're very excited about that. Sharing information with the residents, we get a lot of positive feedback. With regard to some of the significant events that occurred in East Goshen, I'd like to start with the significant trend. First of all, we still continue to have catalytic converter thefts. We had four of them in East Goshen alone during the month of July. The other trend that we're starting to see is people are stealing license plates. They know that everybody has cameras. And a way to defeat that is they steal your license plate, commit a crime, and you don't know your license plate is stolen until somebody shows up saying, do you know anything about this crime that was committed the other night with your license plate? So we're warning residents periodically check your license plate so that you know if it's stolen, you can get it reported so that absolves you of any responsibility. It's unfortunate.
Chief, can I ask, um, where, is there a general place where these thefts are happening?
Particularly the catalytic converter are along the West Chester Pike corridor. And I believe that the one license plate was also along that same corridor.
Not in the parks, though.
No, no, not so much.
Thank you.
Generally, a, a car is not stationary long enough. They're looking for something where you're going to go in a grocery shop for hours or something along that lines, like you're taking your car in to be serviced and mechanics. They know it's going to be sitting there or overnight. That's, that's the safest way to commit the crime.
Chief, can you tell us, um, where would people report their license plate if it's stolen? Would they just call you?
Yes, they will report it to us and we will make sure that it's entered into the databases. So that if anything ever happens with that license plate, they don't have any responsibility for it. Overall, some of the things that occurred in, um, East Goshen was, we had 17 disturbance calls in the month of July. That's a little bit high. One of those incidents resulted in an arrest for simple assault and one was a citation for disorderly conduct. 10 theft investigations, four catalytic converters of that and one license plate. 12 fraud investigations, one sexual assault investigation, two weapons investigations, two child abuse investigations, two alcohol-related investigations, including one arrest for DUI, 10 civil disputes. That's kind of high and I don't really know why. And two missing adult investigations in which both locate, uh, subjects were located. So that's, that's kind of the norm.
Any questions?
Chief, I have a couple of questions. On the calls for service increase, well, when you look at the different types of call for services, or is there any trending, you know, some are down and some are up? Or do you see anything particularly trending right now?
I will say that retail theft investigations are overall up in all three townships. What we're finding is that individuals, it's, it's almost turned into an organized crime. That individual, like over the weekend, we had a group that got on the bus, took public transportation out of a city and hit multiple locations. They were a little surprised to know that they would see a judge and when they couldn't make bail, this is not Philadelphia. So.
I have another question. I, I was reading, um, that one other township bought, um, with a grant, I think, bought the boulder wraps. Is that, what, what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's a very promising technology. We're continuing to look at that. Uh, I recently went to a conference for the PA Chiefs. And they had that and several other items that were interesting that, that were on display and there was a lot of conversation about it. But I am hopeful that that is an emerging technology that we might be able to use. But based upon some of the stories that I've heard and also because there isn't enough statistical data out there to support it, I would say that we should be a little hesitant until there's more information out there. But we're definitely keeping an eye on that and a few other technologies.
The characterizes, so everyone knows the boulder wrap is basically, you shoot a, a charge and it wraps the person, you know, could wrap their arms next to their body and attaches their clothing. And they, they termed it as a de-escalation, uh, I wonder if you're shot with a boulder wrap, whether that's considered de-escalation or not, but I mean, I.
Yeah, it does prevent you from going up the, the continuum to using it. But it has some of the inherent problems that tasers do that because you're wrapped. And if you have forward momentum, you could, you have to look at what you're trying to prevent is a better bet than the injury that will call when, occur when somebody is wrapped up and falls down and has a head injury. So it has potential, but I'm, I'm not quite sold on it. Yeah, there is another handcuff out there that we're looking at. Um, and what allows you is once you get one cuff on, it's almost like a cinch and it pulls the other, it like, I handcuff you and I'm trying to get your other hand and you're flailing around. Once I get the one cuff on, I activate a switch and it pulls the hand behind your back. That might prevent individual injuries and also officer injuries from tearing out their shoulders trying to get people handcuffed.
Does that also have the ability for some of the, for, for some of the larger people out there to at least give them a little bit of play?
Because one of the things that we find is that you have, with individuals that have a disability,
Right.
like a shoulder injury or somebody who's particularly large, you have to use two cuffs and you lose some of the security. When you use two sets of handcuffs, this would allow you to cuff at what is appropriate and comfortable for that individual. So you have the safety, but at the same time, you're not injuring someone.
Perfect. That's great. Interesting.
A lot of technology out there. I'm very excited about where it's going to go.
Chief, two comments and two questions. First comment, I forgot to congratulate you last meeting. I saw a press release from Senator Corman and we were like one of 14 police departments statewide that donated vests to those in Ukraine. So I wanted to say great job on that. Next thing is congrats on the accreditation. What is the percent of police departments across the state that are accredited? And then my second question is where did you guys participate in your night, National Night Out?
There are roughly 9% of all law enforcement agencies in Pennsylvania that are accredited. And we participated in the West Chester one. We wanted to do that, but our obstacle is that to be fair to each of the townships, you'd almost have to do one in three townships. And the staffing that it would take to do that all on, because National Night Out is only one night. We just found that it, we couldn't staff it. So we decided to participate where we could participate. And I got to tell you that West Chester's National Night Out, West Goshen was involved, Willistown was involved, we were involved, a lot of agencies were involved and a lot of people came out. I was very pleased to see that.
I'd like to tag on to that and suggest that, um, in, maybe in the, in the, in the coming years, perhaps we can do, we can participate, but maybe on a different night. I know that it's supposed to be only on one night, but, um, like our community day event. I, I think that would be a perfect opportunity to maybe partner and, and call that our national day out. Or not necessarily National Day, but, but, but rather the East Goshen Community Day out with our police department and, and perhaps we can look at that maybe in the coming years. Because I think it's a really important component for our residents to see police officers in a positive, in a positive way. And, um, that brings so many people from not just East Goshen, but from other communities as well.
Right.
So.
The good news is now that we feel that we've gotten past the certain pandemic level, we're looking to start some of our community outreach programs again. I can't guarantee that we will have a citizens' police academy this year. We're looking to do a condensed version, but the one thing, um, on Friday, we were visiting with the YMCA and they invited us to do coffee with a cop there this fall. So we're excited about that.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else, else have anything for the chief and in the room or on Zoom? Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming out.
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks you too. All right, moving along, uh, we have the Goshen Fire Department here. So Grant Everhart, would you please come on up and give us the rundown?
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you for coming.
Sure. Recovering from the fair.
I had a fair doughnut today. My, my mom had them in the freezer. She treated me to one today.
It lasts a long time. So for the, uh, month of July, uh, we had an average month, uh, 47 fire calls, uh, 27 fire police responses and 374 EMS calls. EMS calls continue to run slightly higher than last year, actually significantly higher, uh, about 16% year-to-date. Primarily due to, uh, additional calls in West Goshen Township and, uh, the addition of the third ambulance during the daytime. Fire calls are running slightly below last year, um, due to fewer responses in East Goshen and Willistown. And our automatic fire alarm rate for the month was, uh, average at 45%. There were only two significant incidents during the month. One was an assist to East Whiteland Fire, East Whiteland Fire Company at the Outback Steakhouse on Lancaster Avenue. And then assisting Edgemont with a building fire, uh, West Chester Pike and Providence Road. And as I mentioned, the highlight for the month was our, uh, Goshen Country Fair, which is our largest fundraiser. At, uh, both in terms of, you know, economic support for the fire company and volunteer hours involved in, in, in running that. So, uh, we had a good year. We had one night that had a little bit of rain. But, uh, our numbers for the week were just about as high as last year. So very pleased with the, uh, with the outcome.
Terrific. Does anybody have any questions for Grant?
One, Grant, thanks for the report. With this third ambulance now in service and you indicate calls are up respecting that, were we not to have the third ambulance in service, those additional calls, who, who's, who's going to respond to those?
So if we, yeah, so if we have three simultaneous calls in the district, then the, the call would be
eternal.
Given to our next due mutual aid company, which would be the Good Fellowship or Malvern.
Okay.
Primary assist.
And has there been a response from those companies relative to the third ambulance that we have that, um, just, you know, the, the chatter that you guys had to say, this is great. We appreciate this third ambulance. It's helped us. We've, our response times have improved, uh, you know, is there, are there stats that are starting to show themselves yet or it's too early? Besides the number of calls.
Discussions with anybody, you know, about, just, um, you know, it benefits us. We are also seeing, an uptick in, in assists outside of our district. So, you know, as you know, Chester County EMS is under a lot of pressure right now. So, um, you know, it's, it's really, um, a system of, of EMS agencies supporting each other.
Yeah, yeah. As always has been, right? Thanks, Grant.
Thanks, Grant. Well, I enjoyed my peaches. I stole a few left. Always have to win those peaches. I put down any amount of money for them. You're so good. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Carmen is not here.
Yes, and so I was going to actually ask if we can move the, um, Good Fellowship update that is under, um, new business 10B. Excuse me, 10A, excuse me, uh, maybe move up their presentation. Is that okay?
Sure. And they, I mean, they can do their monthly calls if they want. And, but I can do Malvern's right here now as well while they're getting.
Okay, well, go ahead and come on up and, and get ready. We'll go over Malvern real quick.
So I have two for Malvern Fire Company, because as you remember, they're going over some administrative, uh, administrative turnover. So they had to get their, their act together, so to speak. So for June, uh, June 2022, East Goshen Township, the monthly responses were 28 calls. Uh, and the year-to-date for East Goshen at that point was 196, which represented 18.7% of the, uh, total year-to-date calls. For the month of July 2022, East Goshen Township had 40 calls. The year-to-date responses at that point were 235, which represented 19.3% of the total calls year-to-date for Malvern Fire Company.
I, I also want to acknowledge, uh, we've been requesting it for some time. Malvern Fire Company presented a very, much more informative monthly reports now. They mimic, if you will, uh, the Good Fellowship report to a degree and it's, it's a very nice, um, presentation. So whoever passes that along to Malvern, uh, really appreciate the extra effort that it, we've been asking for it for a while and they, they deliver.
They really did deliver. I agree. It was terrific. Okay, um, can we go ahead then with, uh, with fellowship then?
Absolutely.
All right, great. Okay, so you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, do you want to, do you want me to do the reports first or, okay, that's fine. For the Good Fellowship July 2022 report, there were a total of 60 calls for East Goshen. That was 10.1% of the calls. Year-to-date calls for East Goshen Township were 364. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I will pass it over to Kim and Chaz. Thank you.
There we go. Thanks for coming out tonight.
So I'm Kim Holman, Executive Director of Good Fellowship. Um, I've been at Good Fellowship since I was in high school. So basically started as a volunteer.
So before you go too far, too far, can you please speak into the microphone? That way we can have it, um, recorded. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm very hard to keep still.
No worries.
So Kim Holman from Good Fellowship Ambulance, I'm the executive director there. Um, I kind of like to put the piece in about how long I've been there, just because legacy and nepotism and all that kind of stuff is most of the time. Why EMS stays tried and true is because we just usually live it, um, and we do it for pretty much our entire lives. We wanted to talk to you a little bit about, and Derek, you can go ahead to the next one, a little bit about our organization in general. This, we're really proud of. So this is our cardiac, um, care that we provide. So every year, the American Heart Association takes our data, reviews our cardiac care to patients who have, are in chest pain. Most people like heart attacks and there's a very strict parameters that you have to meet. Um, and we pretty much year after year are getting this gold plus review. So just kind of speaks to the quality care that we provide, especially on the ALS service, which is really what we deliver here in East Goshen. So we just like to show you that. So it kind of tells you the quality indicators are there and you're, and you're getting great care. Do you want to quick talk about this?
Yeah, certainly. Um, my name's Chaz Bergen. I'm the Chief of Operations from Good Fellowship. So we oversee all the operations that come out of here. Just a, a quick overview of the services we provide. So we do have six ambulances. We do provide the paramedic response vehicles as well. So that's most important. East Goshen Township is the paramedic response vehicle. Goshen Fire Company provides, uh, the BLS ambulance. So in Chester County, we enjoy, um, what's called a two-tiered system. So when the caller calls 911, depending on what they say is what they send. So if you fall down and sprain your ankle, they're just going to send the BLS ambulance, Goshen Fire Company. Uh, if you fall down and strike your head, maybe you're unconscious, they're going to send Goshen Fire Company and Good Fellowship's paramedic. So you have two tiers and that's based on, uh, whatever the 911 caller says. So, uh, but again, for East Goshen Township, just the ALS service, we come out in the, the SUVs you see here. Uh, we have some other vehicles here for special events. We have a golf car. You'll see that around if you go to any of the events in West Chester there. They love driving that thing around. And then as mentioned too, if, if certainly mutually needs provided in East Goshen Township, Goshens tied up, Good Fellowship would come out and provide that mutually as well. So. Yeah, let's keep going here. Uh, so this is our total coverage area. Um, you can see the three little orange houses there. Those are the three stations we operate out of. Uh, again, most importantly for East Goshen, we actually operate out of Goshen Fire Company. They're very kind to us. They allow us to keep a paramedic there during the day. Uh, and then at night, the paramedic comes from our main station, West Goshen Township. So, um, the colored areas you see are just the coverage areas that each station covers. Uh, so the yellow area is covered from Goshen Fire Company. Uh, the orange area is covered from our main station and the green area is covered from our west station, which is on 322 in East Bradford. Uh, and then they all provide mutually to each other if they start getting busy. So specific to East Goshen here, uh, we cover about 67% of the township for ALS services. Uh, the other half is provided by Malvern Fire Company. So 67% of your population, about 12,000 residents, uh, is who Good Fellowship covers. And on average, uh, last year was 562 ALS calls within the township. Uh, and this is just a breakdown of all of the townships, kind of where East Goshen falls in our call volume. Uh, obviously our biggest consumers for Good Fellowship is Westchester Borough and West Goshen Township. Uh, but you can see East Goshen is there in our top four, uh, as far as total call volume. Got there. I'll let Kim take over from here.
Back to the finance girl. Um, so this is not a unique story to Good Fellowship. Grant has probably filled you in on this as well. Multiple EMS agencies are saying the same thing. Um, he mentioned EMS going through trying times right now. Um, we have consistently over the history of EMS run short on revenue because we are regulated heavily on how much we can get in insurance reimbursement. That is the primary payer of ambulance service is we bill the patient's insurance. But depending on what kind of insurance they have depends on how much reimbursement we get. So Medicare and Medicaid tend to be the two biggest in our payer mix of people that we bill out. And when that happens, they have a restricted amount on how much they pay. So really the heavy weight of the billing will then fall on the commercial payers, Aetna, Blue Cross, those kind of, um, organizations. And depending on what your payer mix is, changes the story for every ambulance company. So what our pair mix is, is different than what Goshen's payer mix is. So even comparing organization to organization, you see a little bit different on the funding. What is essentially the same and will always be the song is that that revenue far is, it's too low versus the expenses that you have to have. So same thing on the expense side, you are regulated by what you have to have on the ambulance for it to be qualified or licensed by the state. So they say how many four-by-fours you have to have, how much equipment you have to have. And on top of that, they also mandate the personnel that you have on the vehicle. So you have to have a certain patch on your arm to qualify for this kind of vehicle. Like our paramedic, one has to have a person with a patch. It's a paramedic. So you're regulated on that side as well.
Kim, I hate to interrupt your flow, but I asked a question on the, on the ALS transport, um, reimbursement. A lot of times the payers pay the patient and then the patient doesn't pay you. Do you have any statistics on how, what percentage of that or dollar amount? And I know there is proposed legislation in Harrisburg to have the payers paid directly to the EMS. You know, the status of that legislation.
I do. So the percentage right off the top of my head for the number of our private, we call them private pay or, um, private party. So on those, the, the ones that go direct to the patient, predominantly it's a Blue Cross product that does that. And based on percentage, it just kind of depends on the Blue Cross patients. But it's pretty high. I mean, it's statistically significant, um, that the bill goes to the patient. To the point where the legislation came up in Harrisburg that the EMS supported of, hey, direct pay, instead of us having to go to you and then you get to sign me over the check, that adds months to that collection process. And a lot of times the patients get this check, have no idea, they cash it and then, you know, it's, especially in these times, it's gone. The direct pay legislation, unfortunately, um, most of the townships in our area were very supportive about writing letters for that, which we were very thankful for. However, it died in the insurance committee. And the, the, yeah, well, and the coolest thing was, um, one of our board members, his name is Saul Cone. His nephew is actually Alan Cone, who is the executive director of that committee up in Harrisburg. So I got to have a one-on-one conversation with him, which was really great. Because, you know, I'm in all these advocacy groups and we are all championing direct pay, direct pay and thinking at one point it might be our salvation to turn around this revenue quicker. Unfortunately, he pushed a straight shooter, which was great and said, it'll never happen.
Did it give you a reason why?
Yeah. So of course I said, what are you talking about? The reason why is basically we, as the EMS people want to say, hey, insurance company, give me, let's say it's $800. Give me the $800 and then we turn around and balance bill the patient for the rest of whatever's their responsibility. And their constituents and the insurance groups are both saying, okay, you can't have both. So if we're going to pay you direct, they don't want us to balance bill the patients. And of course, the constituents who end up being the patients are saying, yeah, exactly. So if I am going to pay them direct, this, this should go away. And us, the EMS industry is saying, we, this is another Medicare Medicaid example where I bill here, but I'm only going to get this much. I can't keep doing that on all my payers. Because I'm always going to run, I'm going to run short, even more shorter than I already am. So the conversation next was, well then what is the solution? Because I need to go back to these advocacy groups and say, what is the path forward? Because it can't continue to be this. And really the solution was some kind of fee or rate structure. And that's basically the new direction of pretty much all the Pennsylvania EMS advocacy groups is we probably are going to have to go into some kind of rate structure without you having to be a participating provider. Because when you participate with the insurances, everything's lower and it really does become like a Medicare thing. So basically statewide, trying to come up with this rate structure that we believe is fair is probably going to surpass any shot we ever have a direct pay. So unfortunately, from the horse's mouth, direct pay is, is pretty much dead.
Thank you.
Kim, roughly how much money is outstanding that you guys are owed?
So it kind of depends on how you split it, but our AR currently on our books, so we do an accrued method. But we're about 1.5 million that's just out there. Now that's cumulative over time. Now that's cumulative over time. We do gross billing. So basically how much we put out is about six million. And we're very willing to share our budget and get into more granular data or detail if you want. But then after the Medicare allowance and, and then the write-offs and the people that, the balance billing and all that kind of stuff, you only really end up bringing in about one point eight, one point nine in actual cash. And our expenses are now getting around three million dollars. So it's, you know, it's just that one's going up. This one's kind of staying the same. And it's more expensive to run the same call without any additional revenue.
Is that three million dollars a year in expenses?
Yeah. And we'll, we can, if you want to fast forward, Derek, just a little bit. We kind of talked about that. So paramedic wage increases, they're going up. Everybody knows the wage war, right? So I don't have to get into that. But what we've seen in four years, the rate, the wage increases we had to do, we've had to do that in a year. So it's insane how much the pay rate is jumping for, for all of us. And it's not just one of us. But then there's such a shortage of these paramedics that you're actually just swapping with each other and two-dollaring, two-dollaring, two-dollaring. And it's, at some point, there's just going to be a point where you can't do that. So just to give you an idea of the 2023 deficit, so projected revenue in, we do the accrual. So when I talk about the one point eight, one point nine, that's like actual cash, but with our balance dues, all that kind of stuff, it lands around two point three. Our projected expenses though are three point three. And about three hundred thousand dollars of jumping into twenty-three is just increased wage. No more people, no more calls, same people, but just having to pay them more to stay and to, to be here. So the operational deficit is around nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And what we do with that in our formula is basically I split that with you. And I say me because that falls on my shoulders to raise that part. So over ten municipalities, we say, hey, four hundred ninety's you, four ninety's me. So if I create or make any decisions, I have to feel that pain with you, right? So I have to come up with the other half of what I'm asking you to do. What the, the deficit or?
At four ninety.
How do I come up with that? So there's a couple of things we do. Membership drives, which most ambulance companies do, that's around one fifty. And then you subtract out of that, we do donations. I get a lot of things granted. So most of our capital now, the last two or three years, I try and get those donated. So the Lasco Family Foundation actually donated an entire ambulance to us. And that's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So big win, right? We have a training institute. So I just got the mannequin donated for that. And this guy was about fifty thousand dollars. So it's hustle. I mean, honestly, it's, it's, it's just hustling. So it's a lot of different ways. So it's municipal for you guys, for me, it's grants, donation, subscription drives, all sorts of stuff.
Kim, do you see a time when I'm, I'm, I'm seeing the image. Me as a patient and I'm being, ambulance has come and I've had a cardiac issue and I'm being loaded into the ambulance and they're saying, oh, could we have your credit card? Because when you go to the ER, before they even let you in the door to take your vitals, it's, what's your insurance? Can we, what's your, and, and they, the charge is right there.
Well, Mike, that's not a hundred percent true. I was an ER nurse. You're not allowed to do that.
I've been to the ER a couple of times and it's, it's well, of course, you know, I wasn't crawling in or anything either, but you know, first thing was, first thing was the credit card though, to get the fifty, hundred, ninety dollars.
Right. After you're seen, they can, they can collect your co-pay.
Is, is that something that you guys have talked about as a profession and within, and, and getting the insurance industry shut down that, that particular direct pay is, is, is that, is that in the future? I mean, with a gap like this, you, you can't sustain that.
So it's funny enough, the gentleman Saul Cone I was talking about, he used to be our finance chair. And maybe a decade ago, he joked around about having a, a sweeper in the back of the truck.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm visiting.
No, and here's what's very, I think altruistic or, or wonderful about our profession, right? You call nine one one, we go.
No matter.
And we care for you regardless of your ability to pay. We care for you regardless of your ability to do, to do anything, right? I mean, we just come, we take care of you, we get you to the hospital. We'll worry about the money part later. Okay. And that is historically what it's been. And it's kind of how we get here, right? Because it's a duty to go. I mean, it's literally written in the regulations like that. There are other agencies, police departments, fire departments, who can basically say, we're going to go. EMS isn't written that way. So we have a duty to respond. And as I said, we're regulated on both sides. So I don't think that'll ever be an option. There are for-profit hospitals that you can walk into. They have to do the screening we talked about. But then if they deem you non-emergent, they can then ask you for payment. And if you can't pay, they can turn you away. I don't think that'll ever happen in the nine one one system.
But you know, as I look at these numbers and, and I've heard them before in my, my prior work with, with, and, and our interface. You, you can, you can't sustain that. So the quality of the service goes down, you, you shut down one ambulance. So I mean, what I, you haven't come to that point yet, but the, these, I mean, the last time I saw you was two or three years ago. And it was the, the same scenario. So that's three years down the road, three more years down the road, this cumulative deficit. I mean, how it, it, it seems to me unsustainable. So what, what happens?
You know, unfortunately, if I'm, so I'm a West Ocean resident, no offense, I would literally live here in a second. I just landed on a West Ocean house. But if I was a West Ocean resident, and this is what I tell the West Ocean Board when I sit there and I talk to them. Unfortunately, I truly do believe at some point in time, there's going to have to be an enactment of the EMS tax or a half mil in the townships. My goal, and it has always been my goal, is we collectively EMS industry like me, Grant, Malvern, Euclid, we kind of get as efficient as we can, right? So we, we work on our side and be, have the economies of scale and, and get as lean as we can. However, we can't impact the service because when the nine one one calls, we need to be there. Okay. So there is, there is a thing of operational readiness. We have to have that. So the point of me saying that is, I think it's a part, it's going to have to be a partnership between the townships who ultimately it's responsibility to provide this, right? But we have to come to that together because I can't come to you one day and say, I need two million dollars or we're out. I mean, that's irresponsible and we should have seen that coming, right? So we've been doing this funding formula and doing this roadshow and you were one of the first townships that we went to when you were at the other one. You know, and it's, it's not new, right? But the, this deficit is growing because the expense to have the same exact level of service has gone up. So I think, you know, every single EMS leader is having these conversations with their township saying, unfortunately, we're going to have to start to lean on you. You guys truly are lucky that in this area, you have EMS agencies that are pretty well tuned into this. We have seen in the West where they are already into millage and they're already into taxes. And it's not really an access like this. It's just you do the half mil and then just give all that to me and I'll handle it. I think our group around here is basically coming to you and saying, here's our budgets, here's our numbers. This is what we need. This is why we need it. And we have the transparency of a strategic plan right behind it to say, we are partners in providing the service.
The reality is at, under the current scenario of coming, asking to be recognized in the budget and increases every year. And, and that's why you're here to, to ask for additional funding. That gap is not going to be closed by that. And it's no secret that our board and prior boards have discussed under the second class township code that we have the ability to have a specific millage for emergency services. That's a conversation that this board is going to have to have sooner or later. You may foment that at some point to say, we need more, otherwise we're going to, our service is going to be somewhat
You have to pull a trucker.
We were going to have to pull back. We, we may not be able to respond. We're not there yet, but this is a harbinger of that as far as I can tell.
Correct.
And it's just a refresher of what I heard the most recent, last time I saw you was about three years ago. So I think that's something we have to recognize, but something as a board to be recognized, long after Dave and I may be on the board another year and a half. You know, with, with the current administration, it, it, it's, it's going to come up sooner or later than a millage rather than a the roadshow to try and get another 10,000 here, another 5,000 there is going to happen. Because that's what will happen this year with the budget challenges we have. We've got other emergency services that are biting at our feet, not just nipping. And, and the, the budget challenges that every municipality has, and so we can bump it up. But we're not going to hit that in an unsustainable trend and pattern that it has. So it's, and short of what former supervisor Marty Shane often talked about was simply the county at some point in time is going to have to, in the Maryland type model, step up and the counties are going to have to provide more service. Now, we're talking generational on that before you get that kind of change, both politically as well as operationally, but that seems to be the direction. And, but that's not in the immediate 10 years or so that you're going to be coming back and forth in township. So I, I'm just saying that to the, the current board that sooner or later, the, the boards like this and, and Ethan, West Ocean and the others are going to be pressed to impose that millages as authorized under our second class township code. Because a five thousand dollar, 10,000 dollar bump up from each municipality, each budget year is not going to cut amongst four or five municipalities, a four hundred and ninety thousand dollar deficit. So I guess I'm, 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 I'm in the pew with you, sharing it with my colleagues. But that's the reality. That's another one of these challenging realities for municipal government.
And you know, real quick on three, three things on that real fast. So I am a huge stave off the EMS tax as long as possible. Just everybody goes, I'm a kind of a proponent of that. I, I don't want us to tax unless we absolutely have to, right? I'm pretty optimistic carrying that weight. I'm telling you that's going to change. You know, it's going to fall heavier and heavier towards you every year. Because you just can't sustain that fifty fifty split on that, to your point, right? We have talked about legislatively or up in, up in Harrisburg. The, there is a thing about going from a half mil to one mil for EMS. So that is a bill that's kind of out there. But the other piece of that is this county savior, we joke that somebody somewhere is going to do something. That is, we were going to make T-shirts, like somebody somewhere is going to do something, right? They're going to, someone's, they're going to, they're going to save us, right? That is not even possible without an authority legislation, right? So that was shot down by PSATs and then the IFF, right? They didn't support it for lots of different reasons. It takes away your taxing authority to, in that section. So a lot of municipalities didn't want to give that up. But basically to, to kind of put our eggs in the basket that someone somewhere in the version of a county is going to come save us. It's, it's here. It's me and it's you guys and it's, or our township team. So we serve 10 municipalities. Between the 10 municipalities and us, we can do this. We can set up that same kind of model. But we just do it on a smaller version that's much more customized to the area we serve. And I would much rather do that than being a county system. So the third part of that is we have started talking about contracts and entering into a contract agreement for a short term. Some of the, I think Derek knows of this, like we had those June sessions. Yeah, a couple of people came. So it's, it's going into these smaller terms together in this regional kind of situation to say, how do we manage this for our community? And how can we have that system without having to have this somewhere and somewhere helping us?
Well, that separate legislative tax that you referred to, irrespective of that, regardless of that, we have it within our second class township code for emergency services. So it, it, the vehicle is there. But I'm going to ask you after a good presentation like this, I mean, I don't know what our current budget is this year. What's the bottom line? What do you need from us next year? Tell us. I mean, I mean, let's, let's, you know.
The next slide.
You know me.
So we do have the funding formula, right? And we can go into detail offline if you guys want to talk about that. But historically,
No, no, it's, no.
Historically, this is what we have asked. So sometimes this gets confusing because the township will say, oh my, why are we going from this to this? And over the years since 2019, this is basically what we've asked of East Ocean. It's different than what we've received. That's not a knock. Okay. That is, we've known we've received less than the, the historical request. The reason that's relevant is Derek, if you fast forward, when we ask you, keep going, we already talked about that. When we asked you what we needed, right? What you gave us would be less. I just don't want you, we've been getting feedback that what you gave versus what we're asking this year, people are like, oh, it's a fifty percent increase. And we're like, well, no, it's really not because we've been asking you for increases all along. Does that make sense? So I just don't want you to compare what you gave last year to what we're asking for.
It only matches what you give Malvern Fire Company, like fifteen and change.
Yeah, that's typically what the board has previously approved. So. Fifteen thousand, that's what, that's what's in our budget. I've lost track of the numbers clearly. Do we contribute, Dave or, or Derek, anything, is any percentage of our foreign fire relief allocation annual, is, is any of that allocated to Goshen? Or, or, or Good Fellowship Ambulance? For instance, East Bradford, we had a forty-five, forty-five, ten split where forty-five went to Westchester Fire Department, forty-five went to West Bradford and 10% went to, isn't that correct?
No, you're right. I'm saying, I don't think you do.
But we don't. Okay. Well, that's, that's, I mean, there's another source of funds. I don't, I'm not sure whether our foreign fire relief is going to a hundred percent to Goshen. And that, of course, that creates political or controversial within the organization. We've all has been getting it. But there is a certain percentage there that I think should be recognized if we have some available funds in that state allocation that comes to us every year. So that's one, I'm sharing that with the board as a conversation we may have to have offline later on. Okay, sorry.
And, and just so you guys are aware of that relief funds, which Michelle, Mike can educate you up on that, like there is very specific things that you can send that money on.
Well, that's right. Equipment, things of that nature. It's, it's not as if it's going to personnel staffing and wages. And that's, I, I, I understand. It is very, very limited.
So just in general, this is kind of the breakout amongst the 10. So we like to show everybody what everybody's paying. So you can see East Ocean's right, right in there. It's thirty-four thousand.
This is not what everybody's paying. This is what everybody's been requested.
Been requested. So the awesome thing though, Michelle, that's a good point. So last year, this year, 2022, was the first year of a hundred percent participation of all of our municipalities. So we are super proud of that. We started in 2016 with $23,000 in municipal contributions for all nine. Cause we didn't have East Ocean then. So we have made great progress. The townships have been wonderful supporters. Everybody's really come to this idea of understanding that we need your support because they understand what we're up against with that deficit. And there's nothing I can do to change either side of the equation because of regulations.
Derek, I want to go back. This is actually made up of two formulas. So as I mentioned, East Ocean only receives ALS service from Good Fellowship. So half of West Ocean, half of West Town, all of East Ocean provide or just gets ALS service from Good Fellowship. So you're on your own formula. So to provide that ALS service to those three townships, we need eighty thousand dollars. So we split that up based on calls and population. So half of the weight is on your actual usage. Half the weight is on your population, your risk. So that's the, the, the most fair way that we could come up with this. We do this with our other townships as well to get both our ambulances and our paramedic. So like West Ocean, for instance, actually is on two different formulas because their township is split where they get all of Good Fellowship versus just ALS. So so this is again, as fair as possible. It's, it's based on fact, you know, the population and the actual usage. And that's how we divided it up.
My next question then is, how, out of the 10 municipalities that you guys cover, how many of the townships deliver on what you request for funding and how many don't?
Fall short. Yep. I believe four of the 10 fall short.
Six of 10 fully contribute.
Yeah. Could you go the next slide again, Derek? Sorry. I will tell you that the, the largest municipalities all fully contribute at this point. So.
Them being West, the Borough.
West Town, we're working towards.
Wait, what was the four then? West Ocean, Westchester Borough, East Bradford. What was the other one?
Thornbury is a hundred percent. Newland is a hundred percent. West Town, East Ocean, West Whiteland, all we're working with still. All we're working with still, so.
Thanks.
West Bradford is not. Yeah, do you know people? Um we're we're working with all these townships. We've done a ton of township meetings in the last couple of months. Derek's been to a couple of our meetings. Um we're we're really trying to get the word out that, you know, it's been an ask for the last four years. We're getting to the point that that's tough to just accept what you give us. You know, as Kim said, that that deficit is just getting larger and larger, so. We're we're up to this contract discussion now, so I think that is actually our next slide.
I have one more question. This is for Dave Ware, sorry. For the other fire companies that we contribute to, do we deliver in their full expectation or do we fall short for those as well?
I have not personally received any requests from any of those agencies until this year.
But like historically, do you know?
I I don't know.
Well, I I think that I think that you've um offered us a lot of food for thought. Um a good presentation, so thank you for that. The numbers are there. And um we're going to have to take that into consideration as we move forward with our budget. And our budget season starts in just a couple of weeks.
So exciting, isn't it? Mind you.
But but the one, one thing I would suggest, uh Chaz and 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 Kim is is, you know, communicate with Dave and and share some numbers back and forth. We saw those, but say we can, you know, have have a conversation, okay? So that when it comes to us with budget wise, you know, Dave will present and say, you know, here's All right, thanks, guys.
All right. Terrific. Um we're gonna go back up to um number seven, the financial report. There are no minutes to, uh we just got the finance reports and then the treasurer's report. Dave, you wanna?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh as of July thirty-first, net of pass-throughs, the general fund had year-to-date revenues of seven million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and expenses of six million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars for a surplus of one million, one hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh two hundred three dollars. As of July thirty-first, our general fund balance was six million, eight hundred forty-five thousand and thirty-four dollars. Uh this actual year-to-date revenue is two percent higher than budget and four percent higher than prior year. Uh increased building permits, P and R programs and EIT revenue is driving the increase versus budget. Our total year-to-date expenses are one percent over budget, four percent higher than prior year-to-date. Uh stormwater costs, um that is a seasonal thing and we've seen more happen this year with the storms and the rain. Um legal expenses, EIT commissions drove the year-to-date expenses higher than budget. Uh net result from actual operations year-to-date June is ninety-three thousand higher than budget. Uh in conclusion, through this first seven months of twenty twenty-two, uh East Goshen Township still remains on pace to meet our twenty twenty-two general fund budget expectations. Although year-to-date July net result operations is positive, one point one five zero million. Uh looking back historically, we have realized net losses between August through December between under a hundred thousand to up to a million. Um so we will continue to monitor uh year-to-date expenses and revenue versus a budget to make sure we hit our budget.
All right, Dave. So what you're saying really, we're we're our expenses are ninety-three K higher than budget, but clearly year-to-date, our revenues have offset that uh so that we're you know, that's good, but what what you're saying on your outlook paragraph essentially is that most municipalities receive seventy percent, seventy-five percent of their revenues through probably July, August at the latest, and then it really starts to peter out. So
Correct.
Understanding historically then uh what were were what could be the reality uh as you monitor it is that we will start to have an increasing expense revenue channel these last four months.
Yes.
Uh so that that deficit potential loss of of expenses over revenues is going to start to increase and we maybe we'll get lucky, but chances are we're gonna have a pretty good deficit possibly before the end of the year.
I I think we'll end up as a net zero.
Okay.
We could end up a little bit positive, but I I don't feel comfortable saying that we're gonna be
Okay.
A million dollars over budget.
Okay, okay, good, yeah. And I don't want to press you for that, but that's just trying to understand that that paragraph in particular. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Yeah, sorry. I asked you last week, and thank you, Chris, for help with those numbers. What is the amount of money that we have received from Portnoy? I asked you too early.
Okay, give us monthly up, you know, they give you checks every two weeks, right? Oh, it's weekly?
I think he says about twenty percent of what's been sent out, it's been returned, correct?
Yes, we have received, uh let's see, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-four cents, which is a twenty-three point four percent collection overall from the one hundred forty-four million or one hundred forty-four thousand that we sent them. That's that's year-to-date, which is basically two months worth.
And how much does that cost us to collect that? There you go. I just wanted to hear you say, say it again, say it again, say it again.
Almost isn't, almost as important is uh as I mentioned last time with Chris doing the ladder, we have had a number more people set up for automated billing. Um we're seeing AR come that come down. You know, we're not having the same delinquencies showing up.
And no complaints about their their methods of of communication and service, their professional?
No, very professional.
Yeah, good. That's good. That's a good question.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Regarding the financial report?
No, Madam Chair, I'd move that we accept the uh uh receipts and approve the expenditures that presented and the expenditure register and it's summarized in the treasurer's.
We'll skip ahead, huh?
Yeah. All right, great. That's all right. I I don't mind him jumping ahead. So uh Dave, do you want to go ahead and run by that, run that?
So the treasurer's report for the weeks of July twenty-eighth um through the August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. General fund revenue over this period was again driven by earned income and local service tax receipts, uh Q two Comcast franchise fees, which were about in line with what had been forecasted. Uh Pima Tot Lot reimbursement, which is the first piece of the Pima FEMA money that we applied for to the storm last year and uh the end of the year.
That's it?
No, that's that's just the first piece that we've received. We gotta work through a final meeting with them and
Is that the thirty thousand that we requested? Okay, we haven't gone yet? Yeah, I'll bring it up anymore.
Parks and Rec fees and building permit fees. And then expenses for this period included our August Wego contribution, equipment rental, insurance premiums, hazardous waste disposal event and ongoing operating expenses. Our capital reserve funding incurred twenty-seven thousand for the remaining boom mower costs, um which was already approved for the budget and the bond fund incurred expenses of four thousand for Milltown Dam Engineering and one thousand for Hershey's Mill Down Construction. Uh swung by the Hershey's Mill Dam today. And it looks different. I actually saw a baby deer out in the middle of the field.
Okay, and um so the fourth, the four thousand for Milltown Dam is part of the engineering and the engineering is an ongoing thing. Even though not having the permit, we are still permitted to do and need to do engineering behind the scenes.
Yeah, so they're originally budgeted um with Gannett Fleming is uh basically and essentially five separate tasks and they're ranked and the one is um field observation, we have bidding services, office and project closure, closeout, project coordination meetings. So right now we're doing some of the bidding services. You're better at that than we are.
And we we didn't get the permit yet, is that right?
Correct, so.
That I know we won't do this, but if we went as a board of five members and just waited in the lobby and made noise until the director came out.
If you can video that for me.
Uh that would be
That would probably work, but the next project wouldn't go through at all.
It may not. We're not having any more projects in East Goshen. We're done after this.
I'll give you, I'll give you that update. I'll give you that today. The update as of today, I will give it to you later on, but um regarding the expense register, does anybody have any questions?
I just, I just want to note that um in in regard to our West Town, um East Goshen Police, our Wego, our monthly payment of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand um dollars. That equates to about three point nine four million dollars a year for our contract costs for police services. Those are numbers that we don't forget, but it's important for our public to know the um the cost of just police services. The other one I thought I would note is that um East Goshen Township, this operation, this building and the public works actually pays the sewer bill too. We don't, it's not just subsidized by the sewer authority and the and the uh the sewer fund. The township pays, it it's a monthly um dues for sewage services, just like everybody else. Those are the only two comments I have.
Um John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the total annual we go for twenty twenty-two scheduled is four million, one hundred seven thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
That's just for the monthly expense, expense.
That's our monthly contribution through uh December.
Right, and that doesn't include
They stagger it.
That doesn't include the rest of the budget.
Correct, that's capitals outside that.
I have a question uh or kind of a statement uh regarding batch two of three, page one, the very bottom here, Aqua PA, the vendor number forty-two seventeen, is it my imagination or have the hydrant cost up? Have they been going up a little bit?
No, I don't think so, Michelle. I think that's been a stable number and I think it's PUC regulated, that hydrant cost.
It just seemed like it might have been a little higher than usual.
Forget what the number is per quarter for a hydrant. May- maybe they had a recent
Check that, Dave, and come back to the board.
Yeah, absolutely. We did get, we did get a notice um that they were just like every other resident.
Oh, okay, so the so the hydrant cost could have gone up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then batch two, three, page four. Um vendor number eighteen seventy-six. Um this looks like it was pretty much all the community day, community day uh expenditures. Can you tell me, Dave, do we do how much we spend, how much was spent on community day out of the township funds? I'm just curious.
Yes.
And if you don't have a total for that?
No, I do.
Okay.
Well, I was gonna say, it's and then then the think, have to think about the debt of
I'll tell you how much we're asking them to contribute. So we had fireworks, um the charges for Wego, a banner, fan performance, bounce houses, pony rides, light towers, um public works, department labor and equipment, um and sundry miniscule costs for a total of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. So we will be requesting uh a check from Friends of East Goshen for that amount. But it costs, but it costs zero dollars for residents.
Ideally.
Ideally.
And they've been, and they, and Friends of East Goshen have
They have that, they they have that amount in their coffers right now.
Yeah, which is, which is great.
That's fantastic. So Community Day is is going to cost us nothing. And so I I wanted to kind of make a point of that. Um I think that was pretty much I think that's all I, um oh, oh, the the boom mower, that's that was budgeted for. Did we get it yet?
Yep.
Okay. That was it. That's all I had.
I think I put a motion down on the table about an hour.
You did, and I don't even think it was an hour ago. I think it was about six minutes ago.
I kind of jumped the god.
Are there any questions regarding the the expenditures in the audience or in our Zoom room? With our single participant, thank you for for participating, Brian. Um seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. Those in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
All right, uh moving along, old business, discussion of noise and nuisance ordinance changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to hand this over to Bill pretty quickly, but just to summarize our our last meeting, we were the discussion was a little bit all over the place, um didn't come to a consensus on everything, but we honed in this time on a a few different things to discuss and try to try to make some edits in order to get your feedback, so we can make further edits after we get that feedback um on on again, very specific issues. Uh particularly of um time periods and the sound level limits for those those time periods. Um some of the the issues concerning the waiver. Um and then just clarify the exceptions to the noise limits uh as well. So Bill, I will let you articulate exactly what you did as well.
I was gonna say, before you even start your spiel, is it possible to go through it page by page?
The changes?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because I I I'm I'm, I just want to make sure that I don't miss anything.
Yep, yep, it should be pretty easy.
Should be quick.
It 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 won't take too long, don't worry, John.
I just took this whole night away.
So so the copy that you have in your packet is redlined, so you should see each change. Uh and the first one would be on page two to the the table that shows the times and the sound level limits. Uh and based on the conversation we had last time, we talked about this, as Derek mentioned, uh he and I tried to work together to figure out what the consensus was. Uh so if we didn't get it right, let us know.
Okay, I will.
I have a first question. Under the commercial and business, we have seven AM to ten PM. Don't we have a, I I seem to remember when the pipeline was being built, we had kind of an eight o'clock, no work past eight o'clock. Uh is that is that different than the
Now, the pipeline's been allowed to work since ten PM.
Oh, then I'll make a comment that I I don't like that.
Okay.
Ten o'clock uh PM, I I'd rather see that like eight o'clock.
I can get behind that, too.
Uh I will say, if you flip to page three, we did call out constructions explicitly based on the conversations that we had had, uh and they can work between seven AM and seven PM, Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM on Saturday and no time on Sunday.
Okay, so that is that a possible contradiction then to this table that if we got into a uh dispute with a with a party that they come in and say, well, no, your table says this, but you got it in here. Is is there a possible conflict there that we would be you know, we would, they
Bounce bow on a technicality there? That's a, that's a great question, Mike, and no, because
Okay.
This table is the generally applicable rule.
Oh, it's okay.
Uh but then anything that is more specific supersedes the general.
All right, that's good.
All right, so that's, we do have the seven to seven then.
Yeah.
I I I will tell you that as far as the the under the table on page two, under uh residential, public space, open space, agricultural, institutional, I I still moved it to seventy from sixty-five. And under all other times, I moved it from fifty uh fifty-five or fifty. Is that fifty to fifty-five, fifty-five? No, 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 here.
Okay.
Uh to sixty-five, so I still think that seventy is is not unreasonable. Um nor sixty-five for the other hours, but that's just my uh sense of things. And I do have very good hearing, so I
Okay, can we, so so Bill, do you want to go through the red? Do you want to go through this then?
Sure, so um just what the red lines are.
Uh seven AM to seven PM.
Yeah, seven AM to seven PM, sixty-five decibels for residential property, seven PM to seven AM, fifty-five decibels. Now, Mike, were you saying those should be increased?
Uh well, my my sense is that the the upper one should go from sixty-five to seventy and from fifty-five to sixty-five is my my read.
Overnight, you want to go higher overnight?
Yeah, it's not, it's not that, it's not that much great of a a number on this, this.
When you're trying to, when you're trying to sleep, though? I know, I I don't know.
This is, in the suburban landscape, there are a lot of things that we to maintain some good relations with our neighbors that we do accept. And you you just do it, uh whether they're using a uh a um uh a leaf blower at eight-thirty at night or nine o'clock to clean out their garage or whether they've got their vacuum on, et cetera, et cetera. It's just the suburban environment has a lot more stuff going on at the these days and it's not just commercial contractors coming in and providing services, it's resi- residential uh dwellers, rather the the residential owners. Um and they, depending on their schedules, their business or their their lives, they they may be using some of this, the these tools at at hours that we don't think is, you know, fits into that puritanical box. That's just my read.
So so I will say
In the neighborhood that I have in the northern part of the township for forty years, I I see it around my neighbors. I could go over and say, you know, you really shouldn't do that now. You know, that's like putting up fences and stuff and it just destroys the community atmosphere. You got, you gotta give a little bit. You gotta give a little bit. That may be a a theme tonight.
So so just to put it in perspective, using the vacuum cleaner, uh reports say that a vacuum cleaner, when you're nearby, are typically between sixty-five and ninety decibels when you're next to the vacuum cleaner.
Yeah.
Uh so if you're going to a property line, obviously that will decrease unless you're using some
Yeah.
a leaf blower or something right on the property line, because this is measured from the property.
I mean, you know, I I I mean, you know, I I I have neighbors who um. Who were cutting, cutting their grass still at at eight o'clock at night.
Well, then you're probably not gonna call call on them or anything.
No, of course not.
But but I I, let's just at least go through it and then and then maybe talk about. I I just wanna get through it so see, so so that we can, we don't necessarily have to pass it through, but we we need to get through it.
Right, so we increased all the decibel levels by five decibels, basically is the gist of the changes on that page.
Okay.
And the times were adjusted according to your requests. The next changes you'll find are on page four. In exceptions to noise limits, uh in C, we removed uh the requirement. That emergency equipment or snow removal equipment could only be operated by a township official. Uh that was based on the conversation we had, and also added explicitly at the bottom a new J. To uh exempt private events for which a waiver has been granted.
And I'm just gonna point out D is. Handheld power tools.
There you go.
Are operated on residential property between seven and nine PM, so this supersedes the other ones.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle, for pointing out, cuz I just looked at that.
Five.
Uh and then on page five, there was quite an overhaul of the waiver section, given the conversation we had last time. Um we put a a limit to uh two times in any calendar year for an applicant to request a waiver. Uh and that there was, we created some objective criteria in A, one, two, three, and four. Uh that the township manager would review when they were deciding whether to grant or deny a waiver request.
Can I ask for clarification on number four, would this would this apply to? So the operation will not exceed thirty days, so is this gonna be pipeline stuff?
Yeah, that I frankly, I think this was taken from your current ordinance.
Okay.
A lot of the criteria was.
Bill, I have uh two comments, one is um. Uh I think two is is probably not enough. Um for instance, we have a community swimming pool in our neighborhood. And. A lot of Friday nights, uh we, for instance, we have a new neighbor party coming up. Um fourteen new neighbors in our neighborhood, believe it or not. And uh it'll be amplified music and uh lots of participants. Um technically, under this, we we should get a waiver for that event, um I think. Um we have those kinds of events, we have a clam bake, um. We have a taco night, we we got a beer share night, so we we have quite a few of them on Friday nights all summer long. And so I think two is not gonna be reasonable, so I'm suggesting four.
And I could go with four.
Oh, I I I want I want two, that's my opinion, too, so I I would still like clarification on number four that I asked about.
Number four, the operation will not exceed thirty days, so that would be a sort of, if it's a multi-day event or construction.
But my specific permit that I would put out as manager supers, that 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 frames the criteria.
But it doesn't mean you have.
Another means I, but so I can't exceed thirty days, but in other words, for a special event, I can go less than that, just if it's a day event.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanna clarification on that.
I I would, I have a question, um you set out four circumstances here.
Yep.
Is it any one of the four?
Uh no, they're they're. Factors that you would weigh, so he would look at all four factors to decide whether the totality of the circumstances are appropriate to grant a waiver.
Okay.
They're subjective.
They are, but they're as objective as you can be, I think.
Yes, no, I I I agree.
And and they are actually in your current ordinance, so they are drawn from your.
Yep.
Bill, I had a one more question, and that's the the last paragraph, it says that the request for a waiver would include a list of names and addresses. Um if I were having a party in my backyard, would it be my responsibility to identify the names and addresses of the people within five hundred feet of my home?
So so yeah, the township, I'm sure could help you with that, uh there are simple ways to do that. Through the county's uh GIS website, and does the township have their own?
I mean, yeah, right now, we actually currently do it for the individual um. The reason to put it down to five hundred was currently it's a thousand, and. To our our zoning officer said it is a little cumbersome to to go through um for an an event such as whatever, so. Um that was at at the request, as far as the language of, maybe it sounds like we're making the residents do it, I. I mean, from a practical standpoint, I think we'll probably still continue to do it.
Okay.
Well, that cuts you back, though, that's that's the good part.
Bill, a question.
We can, we can make the township do it if you prefer.
Uh we can, we can do that, I don't care. The bigger issue I had was the seven-day thing um. Is it possible to, I don't know, is it possible to make it fourteen days? And the reason I say that is.
Yeah.
We get the information, my zoning officer has to go over the information, he has to get the letters ready. We have to jointly see, since I'm manager and I'm responsible for it, exactly what's going on, so. I would love to get residents, you know, that are surrounding any sort of waiver situation, the 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 documentation prior to.
Days is better because you have the the second part of that sentence.
That you can waive it.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
I think looking.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, it was especially with the um US Postal Service as they are. Uh.
That's true.
Want for delivering.
So. Before I, before I flip to the next page, so that we did not get a consensus on the number.
The number of number of occurrences.
I I think two is too little, though.
Okay, what is your, what's your magic number?
I mean, how, what's, right now, how many waivers are requested?
There there's it's unlimited, there is no.
I understand, I'm sorry, like applicants, how many people are applying, like is it? Twenty residents, is it one resident, is it thirteen?
There's probably a few residents per, I mean, no, we don't get a lot of noise permits, as far as if you're talking about. Right, as the actual residents, I mean, there's a few, there's a few residents that do multiple ones.
So let's just point out the elephant in the room.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few residents that do multiple per year, but.
Like how many?
It's the maximum number of waivers you've been requested so far this year. By one resident.
It's not this year, though, and prior years.
About ten.
Yeah.
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is not a back and forth right now. How many waivers have been requested by residents, Derek? By one resident was the maximum number this year.
I don't know the answer to that specifically, I mean, it it's it's probably around, I I was gonna say seven, I have to actually get the the correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't wanna speak out of turn and say something wrong.
So it's at least seven, probably from one resident. What's the next highest number that has been requested by any other single resident this year?
Two.
Okay. What do you want?
Now, these are just people that actually, there's a lot of people, yeah, there's a lot of people that do things without waivers, so.
Well, and that's that, that's actually the real issue. The real issue is that these events are going on all over a community, graduation parties, I've talked about this before. Um and people don't come in and get waivers, they just, you know.
No, we, which is, which is why when we first started this conversation, we did have a brief conversation last meeting about getting rid of the waiver system, it didn't seem like.
Yeah.
That caught traction, but that's.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, and on the next page, I'm like, are we setting ourselves up for for um.
Visitation.
You know, I mean, just having to uh administer uh and enforce these things um.
So we don't have a consensus on the number yet, let's get back to that.
So you wanna move on to the changes on the next page?
What number are you saying? What number do you have?
I heard four, four, two. I mean, I mean, let's say hypothetically, the number is ten, and we're limited to four, it's forty percent what they get, I think twenty is a little too extreme, so I'm okay.
Where are you, Mike?
I'm at four.
Sounds like four.
So four, four, you, how many are you voting? Four? I'm two, and John, what are you?
Three.
Alright, so that's twelve, fourteen, well, we can also average it out, that's, that's twelve. Um fifteen, three and a half.
We're not averaging. We're not averaging, we're voting. If four people. Three, four, one, three, and one, two.
Okay, so three people say four, um I would consider it. I suppose.
It's four, yeah.
Right.
Um.
Then moving on to the next page, uh paragraph C allows the township to set up a fee for this, so that way the township isn't eating the cost. And you can charge, you know, actual, we'll have to work with Dave and Derek to calculate what that actual cost looks like. But then that can be added to the fee resolution.
Yep.
And we're not setting a fee in the resolution right now, we're saying that we can.
We can in the resolution, correct.
But I would do it, yeah, well, obviously, we're not passing this tonight anyway, but I would like to do it the same night.
Right.
Oh, and just amend the fee. You guys come up with a number with. Yeah, well, I mean, whatever it is.
To be, to be clear, this is not something that's final tonight, just so you know.
And and just remember, that should include mailing costs, too, to to all the properties within five hundred.
And the time to do that.
The time to do that, so it's gonna be at least seventy-five dollars for each request.
Somebody's a pain, really nail.
How how much time does it take for a waiver request on average, like staff time?
Uh I mean, I think the le-
Other than the letters, like.
Other than the letters, it's probably looking at the situation, the the lot lines, probably like an hour, hour and a half. The the real time-consuming part of it is the letters, so. As we know right now, sending out the sewer.
And you know, the reality is that. You know, we can put things in our newsletter, we can put things on the website, it's in the code, the ordinance has been passed. But unless it becomes fully assimilated by the community, people are gonna have events, and who's gonna enforce it? Oh, they had a graduation party, two hundred people, and the band rocked on till eleven o'clock.
Well, that that's a problem, that's a problem.
Well, I mean, that's when the police respond.
That's, that's when people have a right to step up and say, hey, you know, this is getting out of.
The interesting thing is that the police has made have been very clear that they do not wanna be in a position.
A hundred percent.
Any of us.
Yeah, police are not interested in doing these these services, so that's another conversation that we will engage in.
That's another, that's absolutely another decision, decision.
So the higher you make the fee, the way where even if people know about, they go. Call the band.
Yeah.
Next amplifier.
At at some point, the police can be leaned on.
Of course.
Oh, well, absolutely.
Has to be done.
Cajole influence.
We have, we have the commissioner right here.
We we always have a commissioner right here.
Commissioner.
Yeah, we always have a commissioner on this board and and.
Alright, paragraph D allows the the manager to uh impose conditions or restrictions on the waiver. Uh please excuse my typo that John just pointed out, implemented. Uh paragraph E uh puts it on the township to send out the notices to all the properties within five hundred feet. Paragraph F details uh what happens if you don't abide by the terms of this chapter or the conditions of a waiver that is granted. That is that you can have a permit revoked or suspended, and potentially a one-year ban on obtaining future waivers.
That's good.
Okay.
And that's it.
And that's it?
That's it.
We're getting close, guys.
Oh, yes, have you seen any bamboo field?
Did you visit any bamboo fields?
I don't know, I know where there's one.
Okay, so.
In fact, there's bamboos sticking out um on um Boot Road.
Yep.
When you go around the corner there, that should be cut down.
So um normally, because there's no, there is no vote on this, normally, we wouldn't have public input at this time.
I have, I I'm I'm not finished talking about this, there's more sections here. Um Bill, under the he- health hazards and and nuisances. I'm looking at page seven.
Okay.
Um I'm looking for industrial chemicals or compounds other than household types in quantities. I saw that there was gasoline, um you know, over five thousand gallons, but um I'm I'm gonna hearken back to. The use of industrial chemicals and compounds uh on construction sites and so on, that might.
Yeah, that's a.
So A two, A two on the next page references scrap metal, glass, industrial waste, or other similar similar.
Yeah, industrial waste is not like, for instance, bent night with chemicals squirting into somebody's backyard, that's not industrial waste.
That's, that's a specific thing.
That night was um a factor, Bill, um with.
Yeah, yeah, the the drilling mud, yeah. Um.
Let's get, let's get that.
Two.
Can you add that in? Let's get that in there.
I was just thinking of toxic chemicals and.
Well, is.
It's not considered toxic.
It's not.
It's an, it's got an MSD, and they did not disclose disclose chemical additives to the bent night, so it needs to be in here.
I agree, but the problem is the bent night is not, it's in, it's in, it's a makeup.
But they added lubricants to the bent night.
Would you describe it?
And they didn't disclose that they did it.
I know, so how would we describe it, though? That's the thing.
How do you describe?
Toxic chemicals.
Is.
I can easily add toxic chemicals.
Or industrial chemicals.
Well, industrial chemicals are labor.
Yeah, but in a, in a nuisance ordinance.
It's not.
The issue is. If if you have, uh uh this is, uh you know, it's the definition of a nuisance.
Yeah. And there's a.
Typically talks about. The health hazards to residents of the township.
And that dust is a hazard.
And bent night with undisclosed chemical lubricants creates a health hazard.
It does.
To our residents.
It's 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 a, it's a, it's a ha- it's a hazard, it's it's an inhalation hazard.
Bill, do you? Can can you work this out?
I think I can, I think I can figure that out, and and also just, one thing to remember, I I will certainly try to figure out how to add that in there. Um one thing to remember, though, is that a noise ordinance can't, or a nuisance ordinance, rather, can't always cover every single thing that you could possibly think of. So there is the the catch-all as well.
Yeah, but these ordinances, nuisance ordinances have been used to to enforce where other ordinances failed. When we had uh.
Yep.
Invasive pipelines, uh you know. Wantantly disregarding uh all our rules and regulations in the township and and uh. And we've got eleven pipelines, and I'm hoping we're done with pipelines, but.
But let's get it in there.
Ever are, so.
Well, what do you, what do you think about number three?
Try and cover that, well, I mean, we, you know, and and you know, let's let. We have ten pipelines in the township, so you know, if we have to spell out pipelines as well, and the maintenance or operation.
Page eight, David, at the top. And page eight at the top, number three.
Any other material conducive to the harboring of vermin or otherwise cause a potential health hazard nuisance, including.
Including but not limited to.
Everything.
I think it has to be included, including but not limited to, because because it still offers too much wiggle room. Because they'll argue that bent night is not hazardous material, because it's a makeup. And so it it couldn't possibly be a hazardous material. It's the additives.
Just a.
It has an MSDS and it's listed as a chemical compound.
Can we have a anything that has an MSDS? Can we add that to it, Bill? What do you think?
I don't think so, because there are some things that have an MSDS, yeah, that that are just.
Yeah, that'd be. So I, my suggestion is Bill works on that language, the chief and our zoning officer both wanted to review this before we would pass for advertisement. Um so we're not gonna make a motion to advertise tonight anyway, so if Bill wants to work on that language, I'll get the rest of it to the chief. And Duane, and then we can come back at some point in September, hopefully asking for a motion to advertise if we're at that point. That's my suggestion, but the board can. Carry on, if they will.
Is there any other language, David, for for the dust and whatnot?
Clarifying on page twelve, the violation and penalties, um. It it it's enforceable, I guess, only upon summary conviction thereof, so there has to be a legal.
Oh, yeah, correct, yeah, this this would go to the district judge.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um normally, we would not have public comment at this time, but I know that um we have a couple residents here who are specifically here for this purpose. And I would invite, Bill, do you wanna come up there and make some comments regarding this?
Can we ask that the comments not be repetitive with the last meeting?
We can. We can try to ask that you. Are mind, are mindful of what you've said in the past.
Bill Guyer, fifteen sixty Tigerwood, so. You know, first, Margie and I spoke about this last night, I guess at a high level, really wanted to kind of reinforce, what what are we trying to achieve here, right? Trying to, this is not about, you know, it it's not a court battle between the Guyers and their neighbors. This is about the board adopting a noise ordinance that protects the rights, the property rights of all our township presidents. You know, and I think kind of the one, the first line, you know. Protecting all the residents from nuisance, and and a nuisance being, including a a a noise, sound. That inhibits their ability to 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 enjoy the peaceful use of their property. And that's in a lot of the townships, um townships uh ordinances. The purpose is not to accommodate. Cuz I heard a lot of talking basically about accommodating exceptions to that. So it shouldn't be about accommodating any particular residence or any group of residents with being able to. Basically impede on the general property rights of of the township presidents. So, I mean, I have some, you know, I can give you some specific feedback on the discussion today, when I was here. When I was here, July nineteenth, you asked me to provide Derek. Proposals, I did that, I think with the exception of the um the limit of two, two waivers. Uh I mean, there were some other things, um but my specific proposals kind of morphed into a change. And then you guys have obviously discussed some fairly significant changes, even beyond that, so I'm happy to go into that if you want. But um.
Why don't you?
Or I can send it in an email to 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 Derek again. But I will, I will make a couple comments, and I guess I would be just for, I guess, transparency for any. Well, there's no, no, there's one resident here on site, I don't know how many are on the uh on YouTube. So from a transparency perspective, Madam Chairman, if you're okay with me asking this question, I would like to know. Maybe a raise of the hands, which, if any, and I know some, what what supervisors have attended my neighbors' concerts?
I have, I've attended two of them.
And I've attended many of them.
So is many more than ten, more than fifteen?
No.
So. I'm I'm just curious, I'm trying to get a s- a sense of.
I've attended several.
No, I've attended none, none.
None.
Okay. Would you guys like me to play just some, we had one this past weekend?
Oh.
Like to play some audio, just to give you perspective, because I think it helps.
Was there a permit?
Yes.
Yes.
And. Was it under the old rules?
Yes, this hasn't been asked yet, so yeah.
Stop at the time that they were supposed to?
So the, I'll just read off, so it was basically a a temporary permit for the property owners to play amplified music on their property on the following dates, August fourteenth from three P M to eight P M, and September eighteenth from three P M to eight P M. The rain dates are August twenty-first to September twenty-fifth. Music should not begin prior to three, was complete no later than eight. Music shall be kept to a reasonable level to provide entertainment for those in attendance and not create a noise disturbance for the surrounding residents. If the police respond, you know, you'll you'll comply with whatever they 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 uh demand. So, yeah, there was, there was a permit for this past weekend, and Derek was gracious enough to give me a heads up on Wednesday that it was about to go into the mail, so I actually got it on Thursday, we got it in our mailbox Thursday evening, which is actually, you know. I was gonna say, normally, we get it on Fridays for, you know, when when they're coming. So, um.
So you like the longer timeframe of being notified at least?
Oh, yeah, well, okay, I mean, now we're getting into the details again, which I'm happy to do.
But go ahead, go ahead and play the the music.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, I think it'll be useful to hear some of this, so um. You know, what was different is last night, we were having, we were sitting in our kitchen, at our table, trying to eat dinner. And I say, you know, it'd be good, why don't I get some, why don't I get some recordings right now? Inside our house, um with the screens, you know, windows open. So. So this first one, it's it's actually kind of funny, because I wasn't expecting this in the uh very first time we went to do it, and this happened to be uh an interesting. So. Now, my office, I think I've mentioned before, my office is is right, right next as well to, right to the, and right next to the kitchen table. So, here's the. This is inside my office, it's a ten by ten by ten office.
So that's, how far, how far from your property line is that located?
So that's about seventy-five to eighty feet to the band stage.
And that's inside your house?
That's, that's inside my house. Okay, let me, um, then one more on the inside of the house.
Bill, what time did the concert end Sunday night?
Um, it was seven thirty-ish.
It started right at the time of the terminal.
Um. I I mean, they they typically start warming up anywhere between three and four, I can hear them testing, it's, you know, trying to, trying to test them. Were you there, David?
No warm-up, and in fact, the music didn't start till about four fifteen. Um and I sat with my decibel equipment uh that gave me averages and peaks and so on. We did have a singer, Becca Jones, who's particularly good, and she sounded like Melissa Etheridge, and she was a little loud. But uh she hit a seventy-nine point nine for about three seconds. Um average was around sixty-seven point five, uh and I was sitting in front of the stage. Um so uh music started about four fifteen, ended promptly at seven thirty-five. The permit was till eight o'clock, the previous one I attended, uh music stopped at seven o'clock, started at four, ended at seven.
I don't think that's really ever been your issue, is that it does seem to stop by the time they're scheduled to stop.
Well, yeah, but you know, it's.
But still.
You know, we like music, so you know, it's it's not a situation where we don't like music, and I would say some of these guys are actually pretty decent. But it's not about that, it's about, you know, it's a bit, again, about pe- being able to peacefully enjoy your property.
Yeah, I was just curious to see if like for this and others, if they've used the time limit, that's all it is.
Uh in the past, they have, but I mean, that's that's, once it escalated, you know. So this is inside my office, too.
It's loud in your home, that's in your home, it's not in your backyard, and that's not at your property line, that's in your house, so.
Okay, so that one, though, so I don't know what you're using, David, but that one. That was an average of fifty-two, fifty-four point two with a peak of sixty-seven point five, so you can hear, that's, it's actually, it's still pretty loud. So raising it, you know, raising it beyond, you know, originally what, the original draft that, Bill, you had on July nineteenth. You said was, you know, what most of the neighboring townships had. Um and it was sixty, sixty decibels and um during during the day and fifty at night. That's what was in the draft on July nineteen, and that was not discussed, to change those decibel levels.
Right.
Session, what was discussed was to change the times.
Right.
Um to be Monday through, to be seven days, seven A M to seven P M.
Right.
So, um you know, and 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 decimal levels are not, they're not linear, they're they're um. So sixty is much higher than fifty, seventy is a lot higher than than sixty. I think it's like a factor of three for each um two or three decimals, I I forget exactly, but um, so that's that, I mean, I can give you some some other quick audios if you'd like to hear.
I think that gives us an idea of what it sounds like in your house.
They're even louder than this outside, yes, but, you know, so. You know, again, back to, you know, are are you trying to accommodate people, being able to think about, you know, our township residents?
I'm not trying to accommodate people, I think that in a community where there's an opportunity and I saw the people that come together in that, in that group, uh thirty, forty people that were there uh enjoying music, connecting with it uh for a few hours on a Sunday afternoon, happens three or four times a year. Um and the inconvenience for a few hours that I didn't think the music was excessively loud and I sat next to David. Um one, one individual inflicting upon a community that's trying to enjoy some culture and some music a few times a year for a couple of hours, I think it's uh, I'm going with the community, I'll tell you that right now. So I I'm not, I'm not buying the, the, the health and disruption for a few hours. I'm just not buying it, period.
I I'm glad you you made that public.
Oh, it's absolutely public, uh and uh I think that uh mu- music and and that kind of cultural opportunity for a community is a wonderful thing, especially in these times, people can come together, it was a peaceful group. Um I was pleased to be there, and I didn't find the music either offensive or uh having to put earplugs in or anything else. For a few hours, I you happen to be a next-door neighbor, uh I didn't find it uh offensive. And you know, I can't stand in your shoes, but uh I'm not going to uh have a community uh within in a reasonable activity be disrupted by one, one, one party, one citizen, I'll say it publicly.
I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that um I understand that it was, it's not three or four times a year. This has at least been, there have been about seven requested.
That's not true, um not true.
We're gonna, we're, we'll get the number from Derek, Derek's gonna have to look into that, and the fact is, is that I think that seven's excessive. I think that six is excessive, I think that.
I agree, um I agree, that's why we selected four.
I think that, that's why, yeah, four was chosen, um that's not necessarily the end of things. It depends on how the rest of this ordinance were to shake out. Um and I think that uh while it's finding good to accept um what some believe is culture and enjoyable evening out, it is disruptive to other residents nearby, so.
One resident in this particular case.
Nobody else complains, a lot of people attend, this may be a little less esoteric, but um you know, in an ordinance for um development, we're not allowed to dictate aesthetics. We can do design guidelines and so on, um but we're restricted by law um on aesthetics. So we translate that to noise. Um how is it that we don't differentiate between my neighbor's leaf blower and lawnmower and acoustic guitar music? Um it it to me, um you know, any resident could be standing up there complaining about.
I'm sorry, David, that's deceptive, it's not just acoustic guitar music, I can play it, there's drum sets, cymbals, there's um saxophones.
Okay, but it's music, and and so, you know, the the issue is, you know, we you also live very close to the tennis courts and and the pickleball courts.
Yeah, and those, I mean.
Backyard, and you're not too far from the swimming pool, where there's lots of, you know, noisy events, but for some reason.
So, so you're right, when we bought our house, there was tennis courts, now there's pickleball courts, there was always a swimming pool. That's a community venue that is, that existed since the beginning of the community. It isn't next door, it's, I mean, we are next door to the tennis courts, but it isn't, it isn't as close as the concert venue, so it isn't as loud, and we, we can hear, I can hear when somebody's playing pickleball. But it isn't, doesn't, I don't have to turn up the television louder, I don't have to say, oh, mom, I'll call you back when I can hear you. It's, it's a different level of noise, even even the swimming pool, where there is sometimes amplified music. If I go out, if I take my trash out or whatever, I can hear it, but it's not disruptive. So, you know, we're asked, we're asked to be flexible, or, you know, um being told that we don't know how many times we've been disrupted in our house. We're, we're the ones who've been nothing but flexible, we haven't called the police, that's, that's our only we, we thought, okay, well, if we can get some things accepted in the township, then when we do call the police on on concert number five, or concert number seven, or concert that we don't know about, or, you know, we, we stopped inviting people over on Sundays because two days later, two days before, we could, could be informed that that there's a a concert, and turning up the T V to watch my football games on Sunday, like, it it's miserable.
Yeah, as far as, I, and I think your comment about, none of the neighbors, all the other neighbors are happy with it, we have a hundred and forty homes in our community. And I would, I, I don't know, because I don't go to these sessions, but um.
There a reason that you don't go to them? You said you like music and you have an opportunity to listen to nice music right next door.
We haven't.
Uh Mike.
Or Dave, would you, would you invite me over socially?
Yeah.
And and would you be at all offended that I didn't attend because we don't, we we don't.
But see, this is, this, okay, I know, this is, this is, this is too much.
Yeah, it is too much.
It's too much, and and I I think that as supervisors, we're here to listen and accept the fact that these residents are complaining about an issue, they've spoken to, they've spoken eloquently and politely. And I don't, I don't think it's right that we, that the they're provoked, and at that, this point, it's gotta end. So, Bill, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead and make a last statement regarding this, and then um we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next issue.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, ultimately, it's about respect, respect for our township residents, and you know, I would hope that this board would respect property rights and respect the ability for for all residents to peacefully enjoy their property.
Okay.
Um I realize there's some subjectivity to that, but I think what you're discussing is well beyond what's reasonable.
Okay.
And actually, there's one last question I did have, so I know the process, you're eventually gonna agree on a, on a draft that that's taken forward to eventually a public hearing, so what happens if you get like overwhelming public opposition to whatever draft you come up with? What happens? It has to start over from the beginning, like there's a, I thought there was a thirty-day process.
There's still getting into that.
Yeah, so uh once a draft is agreed upon by the board, it will go to the Township Planning Commission for their review and comment as well as the County Planning Commission for their review and comment, because it changes portions of the township's zoning ordinance. Uh really just taking things out of that and making it its own standalone ordinance, but they will both have the opportunity to review that. And then they each have thirty days to do so, uh and then at some point, presumably, the board will choose a date to hold a hearing uh to listen to comment about the ordinance, and then they will have a vote as to whether to adopt it or not.
But but to answer the question more directly, public, public opinion on the matter, or public influence, so to speak, on the matter is subject to each board member's taste, in other words, there could be fifty people in the room that are for it, and the board could vote against it. There could be fifty people in the boardroom that are against and 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 vice versa, so the board the board makes their own votes regardless of public, um public perception on the issue. Or now, th- they're individually entitled to say, you know, I didn't think we were gonna get this much opposition on this subject, maybe we should rethink this. But that's gonna be individually up to each board member.
So it's a, it's approve it or reject it, um but if it's rejected to make any amendments to it, you have to go back through the entire process.
If any substantive changes are made, yes.
Correct.
Correct. And once, once the counties reviewed it, if there were some substantive changes, we would have to go back in the county for the review.
So if, if the, if four, as an example, four is the number of exceptions that you propose, and and you say, oh, boy, you know, four is the people, it's not going over well, maybe it should be two.
Yeah.
Or one, or none.
Yeah, unfortunately, the law doesn't give a bright line test to what is substantive and what is not, so it's a fact-intensive analysis. I generally err on the side of caution and say that it's material and start the process over again.
Let me repeat something.
Let me repeat something that Michelle said at the very beginning here. If there are specific concerns on your part, Bill, or or your wife's part. We, our email is out there as you very well know, and I'd like to hear about them. That's not to say we'll agree, but we may. And I, the other thing I want to say to Mike. There are times when the public support sitting in this room were, were against your opinion. And you stuck to your opinion and voted the way you thought you should vote anyway, and I admired that. Now, public opinion may swing the other way, but that doesn't mean that we can't vote. What we think is the right thing. And hopefully we can. Narrow it down and get rid of the, the arguments, but we still will vote as we think is right. You, I know you gentlemen have done that and I admired it and will continue to do.
And in the meantime, if there are any other residents that you know of who are upset with this situation. And they have an opinion about the ordinance changes, they should contact Derek and copy. Board members on their, on their input. So even if they don't publicly want to come forward in a meeting because perhaps they're concerned about that.
Right, because it, it, you all know, you all knew what Bill was gonna talk about. Our neighbors have made it very clear that, you know.
You're, you're the outsiders. And so, so perhaps you're not the outsiders. Perhaps you're one of. And it shouldn't be, but, but it shouldn't be, but I would encourage any residents that are. Um, in this, in a similar situation as you and you are dissatisfied with the situation that they should be contacting us. And vice versa.
In fairness, I'll also make the same invitation to anybody who's in, in support.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I, I said that and vice versa. If there are people in support of it, then they should contact us. And let us know where they stand on it. But if you can have other residents, let us know, that would be helpful. It would be helpful to, to have that information, know where they stand. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And moving on to the next order of business appointment of auditors as an update on the vacancy chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had obviously Tom Clapper resign from. Uh, his two positions as vacancy board chair and auditor. Chuck Proctor was voted on as vacancy chair last meeting. Uh, but it was discovered uh, that he cannot both hold the vacancy chair and the. ZHB alternate that he currently does. So Chuck did uh, inform us he would rather keep this. Zoning Hearing Board alternate position and not take over as the vacancy chair. So. Right now, as I say in the memo, I don't have any names uh, or a good understanding of what the board wants to do with vacancy chair. Uh, but we did come to a consensus on a gentleman named Peter Riley. A former auditor for the township for uh, for Tom's actual auditor position that he has agreed to fill. Uh, for the rest of Tom's term, which would be until the end of twenty twenty-three. So I polled. Board members individually and it seems that we've unanimous agreement on that. So I do have a auditor motion on the table. Uh, in order to appoint Peter Riley as the township auditor.
I'll make the motion that we appoint Peter Riley to the position of township auditor through the next municipal election cycle. And the term expiration at the end of twenty twenty-three. I'll, I'll just make a comment that Peter was elected twice as an auditor and.
I'll second that, David.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions regarding the appointment of Peter Riley to this position? On the board or in the audience? Eric, no. Uh, any Zoom? Um, any Zoom? Um, I think that we need to. Call the question that we have before us with Peter Riley. Those in favor of appointing Peter Riley to the position of township auditor. I, thank you. And we will hopefully have the other, the vacancy can position. Considered for the next meeting. Um, under new business, consider the passing of the MMO, the minimum municipal obligation for township pensions. For the twenty twenty-three budget year. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So each year, the municipalities around the Commonwealth have to. Contribute a minimum municipal obligation to their pension funds and it is done actuarially by. Uh, a calculating from Jim Kennedy, not Jim Kennedy. Is that who he used to?
Yes.
TJM through TJM for us and we have four pension plans that we have to contribute. Uh, minimum municipal obligation to on a annual basis. So this is for that. Uh, this is for those four following pension plans for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. So I'm asking for the board to consider that. And I have attached each financial requirement. And minus minimum municipal obligation sheet for each pension plan, which I have signed already.
And we've met the minimum municipal obligation every year historically.
And I'll make a comment as a member of the pension committee that our, all of our pension plans are very significantly funded. We're not in a deficit position on any of them. And we've been very diligent about maintaining that posture.
Is there a motion on the table?
Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen establishing the minimum municipal obligations for the full. Four following pension plans, fire pension plan one hundred and thirty-two thousand and seventy-four, non-uniform defined pen benefit plan zero. Non-uniform, oh my gosh, this is a mouthful. Non-uniform defined contribution, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred. Non-uniform defined contribution, fifteen thousand, four hundred.
Second motion. Thank you. And are there any questions from anyone on the board? Audience, Zoom room, seeing none, I'm going to call the question those in favor of passing this resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. To establish the MMO.
I.
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 Thank you. And moving along to. Uh, considering passage of the resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. Allowing staff to obtain workers' comp coverage through Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So uh, as I say in the memo, Dave, Dave and I think have been pretty diligent throughout our time here looking for. Efficiencies, trying to save money, just trying to get a little bit more on top of things as we could. It's always been a well-run township, so it's not. Always been easy to find that. Uh, what, what we did find, uh, we, we already. Go with Delaware Valley Insurance Trust for a healthcare. They've been excellent. Um, we enjoyed using them. Customer service was great. Um, Delaware Valley Insurance Trust actually has three trusts. They have the healthcare, which we're already a part of. They have the workers' comp and then they have a property liability as well. Uh, Dave and I over the past several months have explored. Switching our workers' compensation trust over to Delaware Valley. It's currently MRM. There's quite a few reasons for that. We feel it's the strongest thing for the township. Right off the bat, the twenty twenty-three numbers, we will get a premium reduction compared to MRM. Uh, but really what we're looking at more so than the short-term fix is the long-term benefits, which. Uh, Delaware Valley Insurance uh, has been great for healthcare and they, they also offer some great long-term benefits. For the workers' comp, if we were to join that, we get a multi-trust discount for being in two out of three, which, which we think is, is real key. Uh, they have a rate stabilization program, competitive dividend program to compete with what we already get for MRM. Uh, safety grant allocations, better customer service, as I say in the memo. One of the reasons we looked at this is the workers' comp we currently have, although MRM's been. Relatively good on the financial side, some of the customer services issues that we've had with the workers' comp. Has been less than stellar. So that was one of the reasons we even started looking at this. And also, uh, we know this from healthcare as well, far superior member service programs through Divit. Uh, just, just the training and resources is really unparalleled for insurance trust in this area. So. Uh, Dave did a lot of this legwork for me as well, so I will let him. Uh, elaborate if he would like and uh, he put a lot of time in it, so I'll let him go.
Thanks, David. I don't really have a whole lot to add except um, just a couple of actual cases. I mean, we had, we did run into some issues with MRM's custom service. We had certain employees go for workers' comp. Uh, and they were not timely. MRM was not timely getting those bills paid and our people were sent to collections. That's unacceptable.
Yeah.
Um, so they've been patient and uh. We thank them for that. I'm trying to work through it. Um, MRM didn't have a lot of great excuses. Um, but aside from that. It looks like even if we looked at the old rates and rates, of course, always go up, but um, even looking at the old rates for. Twenty twenty-one, uh, October through September twenty twenty-two. Um, with what we're proposed, it would be a twenty-five thousand dollar savings for the township.
Dave, um, I'm just curious.
Too, so we get the rest of this year plus next year.
Oh, that's great. Um, it's the multi-trust discount for being two out of three. What's preventing us from being three out of three?
We, we.
We did go out for property liability, um, which is through MRM. Um, and we did that early this year. Uh, at Derek's instigation, that was a pretty heavy lift. Um, a lot of research, got with Mark Miller and Derek, we had meetings. Um, put together all of the equipment, all the values of everything. All the drivers submitted all of that. They ran the numbers, Delaware Valley did and um, currently couldn't beat. They didn't think they could beat the MRM. So we're hoping getting in now after being in for a year or two, maybe we can revisit that topic.
And you're satisfied with the coverage on property liability with MRM?
They've been good. We use them through Univest, so we have a direct contact. Uh, at Univest who's very responsive, so.
They've been a lot better on the property liability side.
Yeah, we, we, they actually go through New York Insurance or Philadelphia Insurance Company, so I've dealt with. Gosh, it must be two or three different people. And as soon as we have a problem with a vehicle or the traffic lights or. I mean, we just had another one, Forest Bridge. Um, and then another traffic light that got hit. Um, there are a, we've already submitted the bills for those, the expected expenses and they, they've never not paid out to my knowledge.
I'll just tell you that the, the critical thing on workers' compensation is. Claim payment is important as well, but claims management is actually more important. Uh, because if you treat it like an employee benefit. Um, and you're not asking for independent medical reviews when you're allowed to do them and. Those kinds of things, the diligence of the claim representative and managing claims will impact the costs going forward. Um, everyone should know that there's a experience modification on the policy, so the rates are the rates. Um, and then you get an experience mod and a one-point-oh mod is unity, meaning no credit, no debit. Uh, but if your claims experience goes south, you can get a, a, a debit mod which increases and, and they can creep up on you. And so the actual medical claim management is critical, so that's.
And I will say, uh, David, just full disclosure, in my former life, I did. Manage Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust for the other township I, I used to be at. And uh, we did work with. Divid for workers' comment and they were excellent on that front as well, so.
Good.
Well, I want to ask one question on the rating uh, for the respective positions within the workers' comp profile. Uh, is Divit going to accept the current ratings from MRM? Or are they going to do a fresh assessment? How do they, how do they establish?
I, I supplied them with our past five-year runs, lost runs. It's fairly similar, isn't it, the ratings?
You're talking about the rate, so every position has a rate classification, is a four-digit classification.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And so there's some, some people look at those and play games with them and try to get lower classifications than this. Misclassified.
Lose your cover. They may say, we, we don't need you to cover you.
That, so the, the issue is, you know, are they, will they accept the rate classifications of our existing employees?
They're actually, their classifications are lower and then with the annual discounts and. Stretching that across the, the paid firefighters as well, it's um. Firefighters mod is a little bit higher. All of the townships is much lower.
Okay, and they're, and thus part of that, a good chunk of that indicated savings, premium savings. So that's, that's, that's a great, great start. Divit, we know.
They did do their own loss.
Um, is there?
Thank you, Dave and Derek, for your work on this and saving us money. Madam Chair, like, I'd recommend we pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. Authorizing the participation of East Ocean Township in the Delaware Valley Workers Compensation Trust in accordance with the Pennsylvania's Workers Compensation Act and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law.
That was easy for you to say.
My second.
All right, are there any other questions on the board?
Good work.
Audience, Zoom room, seeing none, I'm going to call the question those in favor of switching. I.
Let me, one, one question, Madam Chair. Um, so this indicated. Savings at the moment, will that, that will be reflected in our twenty-three budget then, a lower, lower premium by some dollars anyway? Twenty-five or something?
Yep.
Okay, good. Well, that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, they basically.
We need a couple million more, Mike.
All right, standing issues, Hershey's Mill. Damn, project update, please.
So we are um, currently going through the punch list and.
Great.
The engineer on their side uh, has the ASBILTS for, for uh, total site. So they're doing the ASBILTS right now, comparing them with the original Gannup Fleming drawings, so. Looking at that first before we get a date for the punch list, but that should be shortly. But other than that, as Dave said earlier, it's. Growing up, so to speak, already fairly well. Uh, Mark and I did go over there after the last meeting. I know we discussed it a little bit in depth. I, you know, I, every, every opinion's going to differ, but I thought we did, we did fairly well looking through everything and, and saying what was, what was what. And I thought the boardwalk's looking pretty good as of right now.
Is the parking lot done and striped?
It's not striped, no.
I was over with Mark last week and I wore my stupid sneakers on purpose. And I couldn't slip on the, it's not a boardwalk, of course.
I could have pushed you.
Metal. Uh, the holes are too small for me to get down through, so it wouldn't have worked. But it was not slippery and it looked good. In fact, I asked Mark um, as soon as he got a chance. To take new pictures, uh, because the pictures we have on the website right now are all brown mud. And it's not brown mud and it's all green.
Yeah, we should get the drone out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the one section, they're going to wait to finish the, the final grading and I guess maybe some additional soil and seed. Right below and then the, they put some informational kiosk signs in, I think just this week and they look good.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing that I had suggested based upon some of the comments that the residents had had. Um, or maybe it was the one resident that was in last month, last week or last meeting. Um, about the name for the park. I thought it might be too late on the plaque. The plaque does say Hershey's Mill Dam Park and. Suggest that maybe instead of calling it a park, something else is. Uh, I talked to Mark about that today. I said, you know, these plaques are expensive. They're probably three hundred and fifty bucks. There's, you know, I don't think we want to change it necessarily. But it's something for the board, whether you feel that park is something that should be. Uh, ascribed to that going forward or whether we want to change it and, and have the somewhat nominal cost to change the plaque. It's just a thought I'm sharing.
I don't think that we need to change the plaque so much. It's just maybe brand it differently on the website. And possibly, possibly even um, having, I, I haven't gone, gone over lately to see the informational boards.
They kind of set the tone for it, Michelle, anyway, so that's good.
That's what I'd like to see. Maybe we can make some changes there.
Well, it is a park, though. We're inviting people to come out and use the walkway.
I'm going to give them, I'm going to give part of the Milltown Dan update because I was on the phone with DEP today again.
Thank you, Michelle.
And I've made friends with all of the people, the DEP.
Baby love you.
I'm very nice to them. They're very nice to me.
What you have to do.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make nice with them and. Um, I have now the director of the entire program's phone number, her name and. Um, I'm going to reconnect with Kirk, uh, who is our director. Uh, chief of, chief, the acting chief of dam safety for this area.
Has the permit.
Who has the permit on his desk, who had been out of the office for a month after my last communication. And um, if he's back on Thursday and we have no movement, then I'm going to contact the directors. So I, I will do, I will do that on, on Friday if I have to. So is there anything else to update with us on the, on the Milltown Dan, Derek, or is that pretty much it?
No, that's pretty much it. We're. No, that's pretty much it, we're obviously paying engineering stuff as 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 we go here, but other than that, we're.
Did you want any cost updates on what we spent?
Yeah, if you could uh, update us on the Hershey's Mill, if you have Hershey's Mill.
Sure, Hershey's Mill, so far as of today, we've spent one million five hundred thirty thousand seventy-two, seventy-two dollars. Uh, Milltown Dan, we've spent five hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Five hundred twenty-nine thousand. One seventy-five.
And I just want to go on record saying, the new number is going to be a lot more than the original.
The first number, one million five hundred thirty thousand.
Seventy-two.
And seventy-two, okay. And is that's, how far over budget did we go on that project?
Well, it's interesting, it's it's very difficult to. Comprehend the original budget figures, because they didn't include construction contingencies, nor engineering costs in the budgeted costs, so. So when I say budgeted costs, I'm basically talking construction costs, so original estimate on Hershey's Mill Down was eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. That was quickly revised after I came in to one point, one one million four hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred sixty-one. Latest estimate is one million seven hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-nine. Um, but I do think if we meet the latest budget, we will actually. Well, we're still going to get three hundred and eighty thousand from the grant that's outstanding once we're completed in August. And then I think we're going to have extra bond money, maybe in the tune of five hundred, five hundred and forty thousand. Um, which could be reapplied from the twenty seventeen bonds. To another project or to repay additional funds to. Capital Reserve Fund, we'll have to determine how we want to do that.
All right, um, does anybody have any other matter? Any public comment? Nope. Liaison reports are none, correspondence there um, is none. Um, Cody?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.